Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education on November twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two at six-thirty in the Mount Pleasant High School cafeteria. The mission of Mount Pleasant Public Schools is to empower excellence. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public, but it is not a meeting of the public. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those that have discussed at a previous meeting or presented to the board for discussion this evening. As a courtesy, silence your cell phone and please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Ashenaki peoples, this traditional land we are gathered on today, to recognize the Ashenaki people and their ancestral land in our expression of gratitude and appreciation in a way of honoring the indigenous peoples who have been living and working on this land since time immemorial and whose land, however second an Indian tribe, has presided and who have continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Lomene Roca, please.
Melissa Isaac.
Monpy, here.
Jessica Edmwood.
Here.
Sheila Murphy.
Here.
Amy Bone.
Tim Oyker.
Here.
Jenna Parkman.
Weeding Hangle.
Here.
Thank you very much. Missouri modifications to this evening's agenda from anyone? Do you feel like you're all way over? This evening, student board, student, anyone from the student representative from the Senate?
Student senate.
Student senate, not seeing anyone? Then we will go over to the superintendent's report.
Well, good evening, everyone. We have for you this evening, under my report, a few different presentations, and I'm just running into a little technical information or technical blip here. Let me see if I can get this. Our first presentation this evening is from our fifth grade team from Fancher and Maguire Elementarys, and they're going to talk to you about our fifth grade camp experience. So I'll introduce Katie Reiki, Erin King, and Mary Malvarano.
Hello. I'm Mary Malvarano, fifth grade teacher at Fancher. We are looking at changing from currently what we are, what to before to Camp Hope Nikahic. And so, Katie, why are you looking at the camp?
I wanted Mary to start, so I didn't botch the name of this camp. So, no, Camp Peawonta for quite some time. So, it's been a tradition of Fancher Maguire students to attend an overnight camp, which is an awesome experience. It used to be a sixth grade camp. I actually took students when I was a sixth grade teacher at Fancher, and then at sixth grade moved to the middle school, it became something we had as a tradition for fifth graders. And due to the pandemic, you know, those sorts of events and trips were canceled. So unfortunately, Camp Peawonta, which is up in the Traverse City area, Lake Arbutus, it is a Y and C camp, they are no longer offering a school program. So that is the biggest, we would love to take our students back there, but that is the biggest reason we can no longer attend there. So our fifth grade team at both schools have been working diligently to try to find a new location in order to bring back tradition that our students and staff love so much. It's a great culminating way to end out the school year. So Mary's going to talk a little bit more in depth about a new camp we've got.
Right. So Camp Hope Nikahic, their goal is to ignite students' curiosity for the natural world through an experiential outdoor program that those character develops active thinkers and encourages kids to discover their passions. And Alicia Dorsey, who's also a fifth grade teacher at Fancher, she grew up going there as a kid, so I asked her if she would just give me a quote of what it was like. And she said, Camp Hope Nikahic is where some of my fondest childhood memories were made. The care, fun, and adventure they provide for children is exceptional. Our fifth grade students will remember the time we spent there for years to come. And then our goal for going to camp is to enhance communication skills, both verbal and nonverbal, with our students. And to, they have loved team building activities, so to do team buildings, not only amongst the students, but there'll be parent chaperones and the teachers will be there as well. So I look forward to myself getting in on some of this fun. Also, hands on outdoor experiences, even though we live in a gorgeous area, not all of our students get these experiences, and they're not able to get outside Mount Pleasant, they're not able to have those rich experiences. Some kids do everything, they go skiing, they go hiking, anything you think of. And then there are those students that don't get those experiences, and it's one of the reasons that I think that taking kids on field trips and getting them out in community and then having further experiences like this is really important. And then the strength of friendship for future support. So they've got their friendship groups, but I'm hoping this even makes it stronger. So when they do move out to the middle school, they continue those really strong friendships, and they have people that mean that during that difficult transition. And it's just fun. So we're going to have lots of fun there. The teachers for this camp will choose the activities. They are broken down into East End Recreation, Team Building, High Adventures, and then Heathening Activities. The only ones that cost a little bit extra are the High Adventures, and there are an entire page of things that we get to choose from. So we can, there are hikes, there are things where they can learn about predator prey, recycling, fishing, archery, canoeing, capture of the plat, team building, indoor initiatives, outdoor initiatives. They've got low rope challenges, high climbing towers. So we'll have a whole slew of things that we can look at, and if it's approved, then that's when the teachers will get together and really think about our kids and what they need and what they want to do and what would be fun and exciting. We've had camp come to us the last couple of years, and of course, the climbing is like their favorite thing to do. They love doing the obstacle courses, and they always have a blast with the archery, especially the kids that have never held a bow and arrow. So we'll remember those things and then look at experience so that they might not have. So looking at the kellyacking and canoeing and being with the kids out on the water will be another facet that we'll be looking at. These are just some pictures that I got from their website. You can see the low ropes, left hand upper side, high ropes in the middle, archery, team building, level right hand side, and adventure on the beach. So those are just some activities that are included. The dining hall is totally, it's only a nut-free campus, so we won't have to worry about that. They accommodate for any kind of allergies, any kind of foods that students might need. We would work closely with, his name's Zach, who I've been in connection with, and so we work closely with him, and if there's any types of allergies or things that kids can't have, then he's like, just contact us, we work closely with the kitchen, and then they'll make those accommodations for the kids. Any kids meals, we send off, kid-friendly. They've got sandwich bar, they have spaghetti night, hot dog night, hamburger night, so we send all kinds of things that the kids will enjoy that. This, it's hard to see from far away, but it just shows you that the first day, it started at ten-thirty, and lights out at ten o'clock every night. And if you look at it, even on the first day, they've got one, two, three, four, four activities that we participate in, and then you have dinner, cabin time, they have two evening activities. So that's another area in the evening, we get to choose what we want the kids to participate in. And then there's a full day and another half day. Health services is available through Camp Hope Nikahic. Oh, does that have it wronged me? Hope?
Hope Nikahic.
Nikahic, thank you. Yeah, there we go.
I went to.
Okay, there we go. So yeah, I can say it when I see it. But then Alicia Dorsey said, hey, should you stay around? I gotta be there. I'm like, all right, I'll try. So they offer health services, it is an additional charge, and if we choose to use our health services, they have first aid, emergency care, medicine distribution, I think the cost is two hundred dollars a day maybe, and then five dollars a kid. So it's something that we'll look at if it's approved, whether we're going to include that or whether we'll have staff that comes with us that distributes medicine and is on hand for emergencies and first aid care. And then this camp, unlike the previous camp, we would have parent chaperones, and the ratio is one to ten, it's free, we're allowed to have as many as we want. If we have additional parents come, then they would be charged half the student price, which would be seventy-five dollars. So that will be up to us as a staff, looking at our students and how the staff, our parent chaperones would like to have. The parent chaperone sleeps with the students, and they follow the student's schedule, they supervise during the dining hall time, and there are the cabins for the kids. This is just an example of the cabin, bunk beds, and then the teachers assign the cabins. So we can go across classrooms, and we keep the kids together within classrooms, it'll be up to our discretion as how we want to assign students, and it'll make a big difference if we have chaperoning, so that we have enough male, female chaperones, and then they're So the cost for two days and two nights is a hundred and fifty dollars per student. Teachers are free, again, it's a one to ten ratio, additional parents would be seventy-five. The High Adventures are five to ten dollars extra per student, and we might not get at least having one of those included. And then again, house services are two hundred and an extra five per kid. You want to do that one?
So the previous camp was roughly about one fifty. We do have current two percent grants that one of the teachers from Maguire wrote a couple of years ago now that we utilize, changing his PTO funds, and so, and Erin will figure out funds for Maguire too, but the camp, the nice thing, they provide scholarships sort of the previous camp as well, so if we do need to charge a certain amount, once we have the funding figured out, or the fee per student, the camp itself also provides scholarships. So roughly, cost per camper would be fifty, seventy-five dollars, we believe, at this time. We have to finalize the budget though, so. And due to us not having PTO funds at Maguire, we were talking today about possibly asking the area businesses to sponsor a student. So instead of the fifty to seventy-five, we might ask them to sponsor a student for a hundred dollars, which then we would cover the cost of the medical needs, that kind of stuff, and not be able to, or not have to ask PTO for money, because I think currently our PTO might double the sponsor, ten dollars a kid. So that's kind of our goal so far, is to ask businesses, but we would of course wait until it's approved to go forward with that. And then transportation, we would not have to infringe upon any current times that the students were picked up in the middle school or high school, or the upper elementary and lower elementary, we would just leave after that, and then we would come home around noon. We would go, Maguire would be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so we would come home on Wednesday around noon, well, leave there around noon, back in time for the afternoon run. And then same thing for Fancher, they would leave on Friday, get home around, well, leave around noon in time for the afternoon run. So there would be no overlap there. And we know that the, we have some terrains that may not want to ride the buses, but we're hoping that we can get enough that would want to ride buses with the students that the bus ride might, might not make them want to go on another field trip, but we see that they are already there, so they have no way home. On the way home, maybe. Yes, you say that. And then Mary received a video link that we didn't have initially in the presentation, but it's about a six-minute video that you can watch sometimes if you want, if you want a better idea of the camp. And as far as Maguire, our students in third grade used to go to camp when it was, when they were at Pullen, and this is the first group of third graders that is not going to camp, or did not go to campus third graders because of COVID and just the change in staff. So they were talking a few days ago, I think it was even last week, that they're so excited because we didn't get to go to camp in third grade, and now we're ready to go to camp in fifth grade. So they've been, just been so excited about this possibility, because of course, they know what their siblings have done, what's been done in the past. So that's even more why we hope you approve this, because our kids are already buzzing about how excited they are about what has been done in the past and what they get to do. And I think the biggest thing that Mary and Katie were talking about too, is just building that sense of community with our kids. We want them to have this strong memory and this strong bond of just how much they are loved and cared for and what a wonderful thing to do. It's almost like a vacation that you're taking together as a family of a school.
The kids have been boo-booing the past two years in this camp, and we need to get going camp. My brother went, my sister went, it's like, well, we can't go this year, but we're going to do this other camp. And they had a lot of fun there, but the experience of having a day camp at the high school versus being in the middle of the woods with just your teachers and some parents is just such a different experience for them. I remember going when I was in fifth grade, and I remember hiking with my principal through the woods, getting to the head, and him saying, why didn't you choose money? And I'm like, I'm on a hike. So, you know, it's a little, it's a little couple of years ago, but yeah, I remember that strongly. It's a great experience.
So I'll just remind everyone that typically for overnight field trips, we ask for board approval, although when it's a field trip we do every year, we just tell you that it's happening again. But because this is a new camp and a little bit different, and these ladies are really excited about it, I thought it'd be nice to come and talk about it again this evening.
I have a couple of questions. First, the two schools are going to go at different times, is there any reason you're doing it at different times? I'm just thinking they're all going to go to sixth grade next year. Wouldn't it be nice to kind of combine them?
Personally, it might be nice to combine them, but for me, I want my community to be together together for their last time. So this is the last time that we as Fancher fifth grade will be together as a community, and I think it's really important that that group of kids stays together and that they're in the cabins together and that we're doing all of our events together, because, and me myself as a teacher, like, these are my kids. And I work with two groups of students, because I team with Mrs. Stevens, but I still know Dorsey's kids, I still know Green Brenner's kids, we're still out on the playground together. And so that's, that's probably the main reason that, and that question had come up earlier. And we, even my team of teachers, were like, we just want to be without kids. And so instead of mixing them, we decided it's better for us to leave the federal, like, kids, our own family.
And also, Sheila, you have a dynamic, too, we know what to expect with, like, I know what to expect with my students, I know their personalities, know what makes them tick, what likes they have, dislikes. And I think that's tricky when we introduce a whole new group of kids in camp, some of this might be the first time some of them have been away from their families like this, so that is something new also. So to throw in more students with that, I just don't know that would be the wisest choice for us and that we would have the best experience.
Okay.
So I noticed one of the areas is culture and history, and it talks about Native American life and Michigan settlers. Do we know any more information or details about that, just to make sure that we're not perpetuating any kind of harmful stereotypes if we're trying to build community?
When we were looking at building the scheduling, we were not looking at including that or the winter sports, just because those are more academic-related, and we wanted this experience to be not as academic. So at this point, when I was looking at going to camp, I was looking at the East End Recreation, Team Building, and High Adventures.
Is that something that maybe if you just happen to be able to observe or, you know, something to look into, because maybe it is valuable, we don't know, but maybe it's a bit disconcerting not to.
Yeah, if you would like, I have more information, I think, in one of the, like, breakdown sessions, and I'd be happy to share it with you. And if you think that it would be valuable, it's something that we could definitely look to the scale. Yeah.
And in the previous camp, we did do a few of the things listed, I think they could be common, I don't know exactly how it's ran at this camp, but we did include one or two of those Native American breakouts or activities when we used to go to Camp Peawonta, and they were valuable. But that's a great question to dig in and make sure it aligns with practices.
That should might be part of the evening activities as well.
Does any other board member have any questions? Would you have the field trip paperwork also on your board pack this evening, and when we get to new business, we'll ask that you approve the field trip at that point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next under my, under my report is our annual, our report and update from the maintenance and transportation departments, and so I'll introduce you, Josh Reynolds. Thanks for being here, Josh.
Thank you. Nice to see you guys again. So we will start with facilities this year. Tonight, we will look at capital resources, staffing, operations through the maintenance and facilities departments, and a twenty twenty-one bond update. As far as capital resources go, we have almost eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand square feet of building, which is a lot, that's almost twenty-eight years of proof, spread over thirteen facilities and almost three-hundred-and-fifty-eight years of grounds. As far as maintenance staff goes, we have four maintenance staff, three are licensed, one in plumbing, one in electrical, one in HVAC, and we have a generalist. Their years with the district are broken down to the point, they've been here a long time, they have a great team, very efficient team for being as small as we are, we tend to take care of a lot. So to put that into perspective, the state of Michigan uses a two-thousand square foot home, which is somewhat average as a benchmark. Each of our staff is responsible for maintaining around a hundred and eight homes. How do we communicate through the district what needs fixed? So we use a program called School Do Direct. Some of you guys have heard this before, and I apologize for that. But any, any Mount Pleasant staff has the ability to enter in a work request, whether, you know, be a behavior interventionist, or a teacher, or administrator, anyone can enter it, if they have a bookstore now, a book window, anything. It gets relayed to us. My secretary, Carol Long, processes it, and then I give it to one of the students, and she doesn't instantly know what to do with it. We get around two thousand work requests on average, which we spread that across to our district's workdays, it means we have to be pretty efficient, we have to accomplish a lot each day. Also using School Do is, we use it for facility scheduling, so if you guys know just as well as I do, our buildings are hustling all the time and busy, well, it seems like twenty-four seven. This, this program is any staff that enters an event, and it comes to myself and Jennifer for approval. This goes from athletics to the auditorium, to parent-teacher groups, to after, just any average school program. So it keeps everything organized, it allows them to put in everything from, they want the neon, to the lights on, to they want these doors unlocked, to they want, they need extra custodial support for that, for that event, allows us to keep all of that organized and pretty efficient. Facility rentals, because I know you guys get a lot of questions about that. We do rent our spaces, our auditoriums, mainly our gyms, those are a hot topic with outside sport, sport events, and soccer practices, and basketball clubs, stuff like that. They fill that out, which kind of brings out all the information, all the costs, and they get that to me, and then I enter the School Do Direct, which then everyone else will be aware. Contracted services, so we do have several subcontractors around the district. We did switch residential companies this year, we are now using Romanale Building Services. It's been a good switch, and I talk to people around the district, they do feel like the spaces are cleaner. There is, you know, as with switching any company like that, there's always hiccups in the beginning. Romanale has done everything they can to, you know, get those ironed out as quickly as possible, and everything has been free of cost, if they have to charge for anything, extra for anything like that. So they've been great to work with, and I have no complaints on that. Our groundskeeping is Greenseed, which is a local contractor here, they have also been awesome to work with, they go back to the district every year, whether it's thousands of dollars in mulch, or labor weeding the stadium hill, or weeding our entrances gardens, and they do a great job. Another contracted service that no one really sees is commercial controls, which allows me to do all the HVAC programming through the entire district. So that is what allows me to monitor something from home, someone's today, my, you know, my classroom's cold, I can look at it anywhere and anytime, and manage to diagnose it, give my guys a heads up before they're there, whether it's a weekend or if it happens to be during a work day, we can kind of get a gist of what's happening from the shop without having to disrupt that classroom, which gives us a pretty big advantage when it comes to fixing it. So our new bond projects, bond projects that happened this summer were a new ADA parking lot over by, between softball attendance and baseball. Looks awesome, it's really going to relieve a lot of that traffic congestion and pressing, and it's going to give some nice, close ADA parking, parking space for softball and over baseball, which I've received a lot of complaints over the years, because that grass was tough to get across, you know, over the baseball field. So I'm excited about that. Also done this year is our stadium whole bar renovation, you can see the fix on there, I think it turned out pretty good, that's the closest I can match the possession stint with steel, so I'm pretty excited about that, adds a little bit of an addition with our athletics, being busy as they are, this is allowing them to kind of get a little more organized and a little more efficient. Also done this year is Fancher and Rose Bush roof replacements. This is, these are pretty much the last roofs in the district that need replaced, minus here with some jingles and some stuff that are still in good shape that we're kind of stretching out to the end of this bond series. But as of now, pretty much all the flab roofs in the district are new, between the sixteen bond and the twenty-one bond, which sets us up pretty good for the future. All of those roofs have a twenty-plus-year warranty, so yeah, we should be in good shape for a long time. So summer work coming up, hot topic, Mount Pleasant Middle School, the excavating for the bus loop, we have office renovations, HVAC through the entire building, whether that be, so we're doing many HVAC upgrades. We are doing air conditioning, we are also doing upgraded unit ventilators that have ionization, ionizing bulbs in them to help kill things like COVID and other viruses. So every unit and every classroom will have that included, which is huge, I'm hoping to see like, you know, good, good things with our food numbers and stuff along those lines. We, so we have an addition in the middle school with the weight room. The high school, we have tractor surfacing and a weight room addition here as well. Fancher has a cafeteria addition, some food service upgrades, middle school also has that, and also air conditioning and the same HVAC upgrades. And as far as technology upgrades goes, we have new camera systems, district pride, they're pretty amazing. Joe, Joe can dive into that at some point, but they're awesome. And we are now a one-to-one district as far as Chromebooks go, which is, which is awesome. Some security upgrades. So we did go with Nightlock, which is a similar loophole scenario that I know you guys have discussed. We are pretty much all the way through that process, we did it in phases, and we just have some random remaining doors to button up. Secure Education Consultants is a grant-paid for building safety assessment, and we had our contractor, he did, he did his assessments of all of our facilities and all of our procedures a couple of weeks ago, and, and I don't know if we've gotten anything back yet from those guys, but.
He said it'll take a lot of money.
Take about a month, okay. Those guys are awesome, I took a couple of their seminars down at MSBO, and they used to be in charge of assessing facilities for the president, and the last one they worked for was Obama, so they went in, assessed the facility for any weaknesses, and I'm like, you guys, you know, if you can do that, then you're more than welcome here, so. That's pretty much it as far as security and safety upgrades. Any questions on the slip stuff?
I do have a couple. First of all, thank you, Josh, for showing us.
First of all, thank you, Josh, for showing us this and for all the hard work. It's a lot of things we don't really think about as much or talk about as much, but that's all the behind the scene of it. That was how students do spacey. So big thank you. When, one of the last times we saw you, these programs were new, whether it was the School Dude maintenance or the commercial patrol solution, you were kind of privatizing them and hoping they were going to do what you wanted them to do. Do you feel like that's the case? And can you just answer a little bit, how much of the help it was?
Yeah, so I do think commercial patrols have been here a while, and we got that dialed down to where the HVAC repairing is a lot easier, and we can streamline a lot of it. So every now and then there will be a cold classroom that we just can't get the parts for right now. But for the most part, I, I mean, I think if you maybe had a space go, you know, one or two days or up to a couple of days, it's, you know, under temp or, you know, uncomfortable. But for the most part, it's been diagnosing the system carries, because there's so many sensors and set points that we can kind of narrow it out which part isn't, you know, isn't functioning anymore. On the School Dude side of stuff, I do think the preventative maintenance side is paying off. We're still seeing the same amount of work orders, they're just transitioning from catastrophic work orders to preventative work orders. But the payoff on the financial side with less breaks and less catastrophic breaks, I think we were doing good, and then COVID kind of hit, which kind of threw a wrench in supply and demand, and now we're kind of fighting inflation. So I don't really know if we've saved a bunch of money on the preventative side, because just everything's been crazy costly the last couple of years. I would hope that we have, and that it's working, but I just, if the, you know, if the current state of things was the same as a couple of years ago, I would have a way to compare it, but it's just, you know, the cost of parts and everything is going through the roof. You know, everything's double what it was two or three years ago. So that's a tough one to answer.
No, that counts enough. Thank you.
I have a question of how many of our buildings are air-conditioned? And so right now it's, Fanger and the middle school are planned for this summer to get implemented, so how many of the current buildings are?
Office areas, typically media centers and the high school. Pretty much it. We chose Fanger, Fanger and the middle school, because those are the two-story rooms. So in the summer, in the heat of things, when we come back, we will have classrooms in those second floors that are like low heat, that are uncomfortably warm. So we chose to tackle those first, and that process is going to go in stages as well, because it's, it is a huge process. Jennifer and I were sat through a bid open to it, but we're flipping pages, and it's, it's a big deal to do what we're doing. So it is going to go in stages, but eventually the whole district will be done, and it'll be awesome.
Yeah, I think that Josh underestimated that even by saying that. You have to think that every classroom has a vent in it that's being torn out and replaced. Every hallway has piping that goes down the hallway to go to the, I mean, it is on and on and on. It is not like putting central air in your home. It is significantly different. So, but we have a rocking good mechanical engineer that's drafted it all out. So we have a good plan, it's just a matter of figuring out how we can implement it in phases, because it is very specialized work, and like Josh said, the parts are really expensive and hard to get too.
So to follow up on that, is the thought, how many years do we think it will take to get every classroom? Is it like four or five years kind of thing is what we're looking at?
We haven't, I don't know if we've mapped it out back specifically, so, so there, there is a chance. So these, these projects are out to bid right now. So at our next board meeting, we're hoping that we're bringing you a bid packet that shows, you know, the projects we're, we're going to do. But there is a chance that we may not even get all of the middle school and all of Fanger done this next summer, and we have to be honest about that. It's, it's that big of a project. So we would try to continue to do at least two buildings a year moving forward, but a lot will really depend on how this summer goes.
That makes sense, but I do think it's worth every time we spend.
Yeah.
So it's a great project.
Definitely.
And we will have more information at the next board meeting, because once, once the bids are out, and they are out, we're taking contractors on tours, we'll kind of get a general gist on how they're feeling, they can tackle it. It's such big projects that we broke up into different bid packs, because we don't feel like even the huge contractors in our state, we don't think one contractor can do it all, can do it all quick enough in the summer. So we broke it up into different bid packs. But yeah, it's likely going to be, you come through, you do all the stuff that no one sees, everything, the ceiling, chillers, the big stuff, one summer, and then you come back through and put the new units in the next summer. Just because the lead time on a lot of those units is a year right now, which is horrible. So we're, we're aiming to do a pre-purchase packages, so that like I can buy direct, save that money. I'll store them at the shop. That way, we can't really start the process without having that stuff, because that's also our heat. So like if we come through, get all the pipe, ran demo their, their unit, their room, those don't show up, no one has heat that year. So like, we have to have all the legwork done, and have to have everything on site, and then we can kind of do that last final push and get it all going. But we will have more information soon.
That answered a lot of questions. Thank you.
What's the plan with the security report? So is, there's going to be recommendations for weaknesses and areas to identify? Is that the idea?
Yes, there will be, you'll break, um, rebuilding the kind of weak links in our procedures, in our facilities. It is obviously a great time to do that, given that we're in the middle of a bond, so we can kind of hopefully address a lot of them. But it's basically a bunch list, and we'll just, as a district, we've kind of committed, just we'll work our way down that list and address everything as we can, you know, whether, you know, hopefully it isn't a ton of financial burden, but we'll, we'll do our room pen as quick as we can.
Is there some kind of certification you get at the end? I know, does the state have, you're a secure school district, or?
There is, there is a Michigan certification program, office like that. I don't think I see the S and stuff that's going on right now really tailored to that. I know a few years ago, people were trying to get that certification, but I've never in a district like this size been able to accomplish that.
This is always a good thing to share with our public, that all the programming that we do for security and ongoing, again, it's that background, all these things that happen in the background that we know is stuff to think about. Thank you.
Do you happen to, do you happen to know, because I'm thinking like, are we at secret service level, doing for the president, like, that's all a lot of detail? Do you have any idea how that report's going to come back? Is there going to be like different levels of priority? Like some things where we're going to be like, oh, a line of sight is this, and like, we don't really have to?
He'll, he'll have to, yeah, he'll have everything broken down in like a priority list, but then we'll have to take that list and break it out into our priority, you know, what we can afford to do now, what can be done during the school year, what has to wait through the summer, what's, what needs to be engineered as far as the space goes, so.
When he was here, he spent three days in our buildings, met with all of our principals, all of our directors, talked extensively to Josh and Joe. And so I, I think there were a lot of simple things that even he talked about then, just like, oh, you could easily do this, or you should easily do that kind of thing. So I feel like we were already able to, to do a few things to help improve safety. But he did, I, I met with him, it was the last meeting, you know, as he left, and he did say that he was very impressed with our protocols, he would have some recommendations for improvement, but he thought that, you know, we had a lot of good things, we just needed to kind of keep moving in, in that right direction. On to transportation.
On to transportation. So the transportation update for the year tonight, to put that, we will look at our capital resources, staffing, survivorship, and like annual reporting data, and our food replacement schedule. So as far as capital resources go, we have 20 buses, 18 route buses, three-trip buses, and parts of us, a couple food service trucks. And we also, we have one on order, but speaking of lead times, I have, we ordered a new truck to forward a year and a half still, and we still do not have it. So we have some, we have three boards, seven passenger vans, four athletics. Drivers, we have 13 full-time drivers, which means that currently as we are with the routes that we have, we are fully staffed. Office, with our office staff, we have Stacy Pitts, who is relatively new, a couple months, as our dispatcher slash secretary. Mechanics, we are, we were in the process of interviews when they made this. We have officially hired one, starts Monday. His name is Pete Bleszpi, and he did accept the job, obviously, starts Monday. And we have one substitute driver, Steve DeWitt. Annual reporting data. So ridership on count day, you can see we are trending up, especially since, you know, from the COVID days of 336, we can't go through the, which was not many people, right? Buses back then, so we are up to 791. Our route sheets do indicate that we transport roughly 108 more kids than were there on count day, and a lot of that's due to that, the kids are out for athletics, kids are out because they're sick, you know, all those other extra stuff. Miles traveled in a year, so obviously we don't know, you know, where we're sitting at yet this year, but last year we traveled over 200,000 miles. Fuel consumption, almost 30,000 gallons of fuel, and we spent almost $90,000 in diesel. I'm scared to see that number, given the fuel buses. Crazy this year. Our fleet replacement schedule, luckily through our previous bond and our current bond, we are doing very well with our fleets, and have been able to purchase a couple new buses every year, and cycle out a couple of our goal ones. So I've been working with the business office, they've been getting them on public surplus, and we've been getting them watching off. As far as goals for the year with the transportation department is, as crazy as this seems, it is to keep all routes up and running at the moment. We see districts all over the state are shutting routes down, just because we cannot get drivers. So we are focusing on recruiting, we're advertising in the morning sun, on the radio, got banners hung all around the district, this shit works. We have been able to, how you put on a couple new drivers this year? Did, did kind of offset a couple that we lost the end of last year, which, which is a bummer, but at least we're, you know, at the moment, we're staying close. Something to discuss tonight that, I don't know, I'm assuming Jess talked, you guys already had stuff about it. But previously, and prior to me taking over as director of transportation, I think all districts were kind of looking at consolidating transportation with facilities and maintenance. I think that was a goal, to eliminate administrator for a long time for everybody. Nowadays, I think that role has kind of evolved from a transportation director to a transportation director slash driver slash full-time driver, if that's the case. So we are seeing a lot of districts kind of break them back apart. I do think that, in central office, we do think we are going to start looking for a transportation director that does fit well with their culture, just because they are going to be running pretty much three, four times a day, you know, good chance they're going to be running more than at night, as I have been, and it's, they're just, it comes down to the point where there's just not enough hours in the day type of thing. So if we are able to find one, this will do a couple things for us. This will give us another person who's in the district obligated to run, and able to run a full-time route. This will enable me from being down the hall, like I will still sub, just because that's not, that keeps us from shutting routes down, which is, it's all, it's great to be, you know, fully staffed, but if you can't cover the ops that those staff need, which is where we're struggling, and that's how we ended up with some routes shut down last year, because, you know, we had drivers coming down with COVID, well then we didn't have the subs to, you know, to replace those drivers. So subs are very, it's a very challenging to find sub drivers, because they're running routes they don't know, they're running with kids they do not know, and just with the shape that the industry's in, is, you know, it's tough. So we now have a mechanic who is willing to drive starting Monday. I would be down the hall doing my facilities and maintenance stuff, still keep my CDL up to date, and willing to drive. If we can find a director who is willing to be director and basically full-time route driver as needed, that would be another bond going to drive. And then as long as, you know, our current sub, Steve, when we're, stays with us, which, you know, he's, he sounds like he's going to at least for the next few years, that'll give us four subs to kind of keep everything afloat, whether that be drivers off from surgery, or COVID, or vacation, whatever it is, I think that'll, the flow will keep us up and running, which, you know, like I said, our goal is to not shut down routes, which is impressive, as this whole conversation is. We're trying, but, yeah, so if you guys have any comments on that, but...
Have we ever thought about privatizing, or maybe going to ICTC, or just?
We have, we've had that discussion, and I can tell you, a district, the cell of us, started that process this year. There's only a few companies that are willing to work with us in the central Michigan area. They started that process in, up to date, which is, this is up to like last week, they were able to hire one more driver. We put on two drivers just with us, but they started that privatization process, and they put on one driver. Their director still runs a full-time route day and night. So on top of doing that, they're stroking that, I mean, they're paying them a substantial amount, they're still struggling in the same stroke that we are, and that, that district is obviously paying them a profit on top of that. So I don't know if that's necessarily the, the winning direction. We're trying not to go that direction, because we do still have, you know, several staff that are on this, you know, state pension, still want the state benefits and all that stuff. So we're trying not to go that route, because whether you privatize, and they're paying that driver 20 bucks an hour, and then we still have to pay them a profit on top of that, so it's, it's kind of a toss, but they're struggling just as bad as we are.
The, the company that Josh is talking about would allow us to maintain our current drivers as our own employees, if they wanted to stay our own employees, and that they would hire to sort of supplement that. But, but they're not having any success either. There's other districts around us that completely privatize, so all of their employees, you know, had to either go with them or go to another district, and they're still advertising for drivers every week as well. So we are, we are definitely very committed to our transportation department staff. I mean, you, you see the number of years they've been with us. So if, you know, we're, we're like one or two drivers away from being able to run all of our programs, and then, you know, if we had four or more drivers, we could even look at adding back, which is ultimately our goal, but we, we just need to get creative.
Yeah, we, I mean, long story, we had to discuss that, because it's, it's hard to commit to that direction, given that we see the success they're having in paper districts, and it's not, it's not any better than what we're doing about what we're doing.
So I did have questions, but I think Jennifer just answered them. We would need, what, three, four additional drivers if we wanted to be able to be offered in-town busing? Is that the number? That's probably, to be honest, the question I get asked the most as a school board member is what about in-town driving, oh, in-town busing? And so being able to use specifics to families that ask us is really nice. So is that, is that about three, three, four drivers?
Yeah, three drivers at least. So we need three to bring in town busing back, and I elaborated on this in meeting with Jennifer. We actually, we had, our enrollment is up so much, as you can see from those previous years, that we have buses that are so packed right now, like we legit need to add a route or two to even those loads, and that's not even bringing in town back right now. But like I said, I think we might potentially, with how it's going and how we've been able to recruit this year, I think we might be able to get back to having that three to four to bring in town back, but then we have no way to cover them, maybe the days off, which is our, our...
Is there any way we can work with like ICTC or somebody like that?
I did last year. So we shut that route down last year. I bought, we bought high-ride passes for everybody. I gave them a list, like, hey, these are, these are going to be the kids that are going to flood, you know, in the heat rise. I gave them addresses, listed names, we paid for it, and within a day, we overloaded ICTC. They were like, yeah.
I guess that's what I'm saying, is there's some way that we can work with them on a long-term basis to supplement each other? I mean, it seems to me, the big problem with, with getting drivers is, you know, they, they work in the morning, they work in the afternoon, all right? So it's not like a full-time job. That's really hard to find. Where ICTC, they work all day long. So, you know, that's what I'm thinking, is if, if we could somehow get them to take, I mean, they've already, it, it just seems like that's what the problem is. I mean, I...
So we are offering full-time, full-time work for everybody. All I grew on my drivers has access to full-time work, whether that's lawn supervision, you know, filling in the meantime, or I have a driver that's pretty mechanically inclined, he's working, we eliminated the mechanic assistant last year, so he's working as a mechanic assistant to get the rest of his 40 hours, and so we're not making that position back. So they all have that opportunity, and I find it work for them, whether it's scrubbing buses that are, you know, filthy or anything. So they have that access. ICTC is struggling with these drivers, just like we are. One of our drivers that is actually that we got this year is an ICTC driver.
That's what I was thinking, if we could combine our, our resources and get them taken care of.
And we talked about that, about being, about are there other ways that we could be creative and collaborate with community partners? Linda and I met with the director of education from the tribe on Friday, and I wondered about, you know, could we look at their buses that maybe are coming in to... you know, could we look at their buses that maybe are coming into town? Could they help us, could we help them bring students out, could, you know, could we work together? So we're, we're, we're not opposed to any of those creative solutions. Everyone's just hurting in the same way, so it's hard to.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm thinking, if we can all combine that.
I think, and I also think that our lack of in-town busing does put a large strain on I-Ride right now because when you look at the number of students now that are riding those buses every day, that's significant. You know, we know that, so to be able to keep working together, I think is important.
I, I have one more question that's leading to the in-town busing, and I, I don't know the answer, but I also get asked a fair amount. We used to offer between schools busing, and so a family could drop off everyone at Vowles, and, you know, they would be bused taking to, I, I, I nearly took to Fancher. I don't really remember exactly how that network was set up. Is that something since it's, I don't know if that's something, I know we won't do that anymore. If, is there any option to put that back, or what can I ask your families on the reason? Is it purely against we're short on drivers?
It's, so we do, we do have shuttles. We have shuttles that run between those elementaries. Currently, because all of our buses are so packed, that a lot of them are just teachers, like teachers in uniforms like children's, so we shuttle between staff and all of our staff's childrens. It's, we have, like, last time I did a number for Linda, I think we had twenty-four shuttles that we run that aren't related to our routes, just getting kids from one building to the next. But we, we discussed that, but it's like, how do you open that window? And once I say that, hey, drop your kid off at the high school, I'm going to have enough kids for full routes that need to get to the middle school, and I'm not going to have the space for them. So I just didn't know how to do that and be fair across the board, which I got some slack, caught some slack over from, you know, from community members. I just didn't know how to implement something like that and keep it fair, you know.
So like right now, if a bus, a bus drops off at Vowles and to go to Fancher, they still have Fancher students on the bus? So there might only be room for, let's say, you know, fifteen or twenty students to get off? Well, how do we draw the line if there's?
Thirty kids that need to ride.
Yeah, thirty students at one range. So, so we do, like, that busing that would go from Gannert or Vowles to Fancher, because that's part of, like, the end of their regular route pulling to McGuire, but we don't have buses that go from Vowles over to McGuire, you know, they're not going across.
That makes sense.
Yeah, each, each of our routes has two to three, four buses, and then those distribute to the whole route, so it's, yeah. It's, it's tough.
The, the one request that we got quite a bit last year too, and I'm sure I haven't, it's happened this year, I haven't heard it as much, is middle school students that get dropped off here at the high school needing to get to the middle school. And that's one of our big bond projects, is to really make that parent drop off more smooth and safer for everyone so that parents aren't waiting in line for long periods of time at the middle school to drop off, you know, to be able to get it. The complaint was that they couldn't, they couldn't drop their student off at the middle school and then get across town to drop their student off at the high school. Yes, they wanted to drop them off in, in either location and then have a shuttle. If we could just send more drivers, it would be possible.
I totally understand, and it, it is good for us to know, but I know how hard you're working to make this happen, and I understand the way the process is.
One, one thing that I say when people ask me questions like that also is I suggest, like, is there anyone in your family, any of your neighbors, do you know anyone that might be interested in driving the bus? It's a great job, you provide great benefits, you know, all those kinds of things. So I, I mean, I think the more we spread that word of mouth, also, the, the better.
I agree, isn't one of those home goals to do a sales pitch?
I have a question about, how do we do the, you mentioned the cost of gas. So how does the district manage and how does that work? Do we pre-purchase gas? How, what is the?
We do not pre-purchase gas. We have everything set up with oil. So every bus has their own, basically their own credit card, you go up, you swipe, you don't even see what the dollar costs, but. So every vehicle fills up there, and then they just, you know, they detract it per, per credit card, which is in each vehicle with the pins and your mileage, they just fill this monthly.
So that, it's like a rack rate or is it a commercial rate, or is it a specific?
I think it's just a commercial rate, if you remember, but I think it's just a commercial rate. So yeah, we don't pre-purchase. Some districts have installed fuel tanks to try to get ahead of that. It's extremely expensive, you know, to put your own pumps in, so we have a little bit around.
Have we looked at electric buses, which is another big topic?
Oh, yeah, I've, I've watched some classes, they're taking some seminars on them. There is some grants out there. We don't have the infrastructure right now to do it, as far as the charging infrastructure. With that, with all, we're actually, our entire shop, fleet, carport, which can be pretty crazy.
What about CNG, compressed natural gas?
A lot of people run propane. I don't know about natural gas, that's a newer one for me, but.
Well, I just, I know guys who are in trucking that, that you can do the diesel over the.
Diesel and propane, but.
Over to the, the CNG as well.
Yeah, yeah. All electric buses have been altered age. I haven't heard of any districts that have got them and worked, you know, and they've worked well. I know it, I know they're true, they're like four times the price of our buses, which is extremely expensive on top of the infrastructure, and then they're very limited. So like, we would never be able to commit those to like field trips and stuff because wherever they go, they would never be able to recharge to make it back. It's just due to the cost rate happening, four times the price of our buses, it just doesn't seem, seem the way to go for us yet.
Does anyone have any other questions for Josh?
Thank you for taking all of our pepper today.
Yeah, no problem.
And we'll continue to update, and then I think we talk about transportation, you know, every week, every other week. I mean, it's definitely something that we're heavily focused on.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Actually, pulling up on that, I wonder if, you know, about, not so touchstone, the orders? Maybe we have a decent expectation on there, and just, I mean, I know we keep saying it, but maybe it wouldn't hurt, we could, you know, kind of what we're doing, maybe even give a sense of how big our district is, because I think sometimes folks don't realize the size, like the number of kilometers driven a year, and that would feel, these kind of, a bit of information and advertising to drivers. And I even put it back, we would need four additional drivers to reoffer in-town busing. It is not a money issue, it's a people, like, a personnel issue. And I do think a large amount of our town is not aware of that. And so I know we've, we've said it, I know we've put it out there, but maybe reiterating that message in a, on your communication, or even putting it on the app, or how can we do it?
Can we also offer the opportunity that they could just run a morning route? And then somebody could just run an afternoon route? I mean, do you have people that do that?
We do not have anybody that does that, because once we bring them to school, we have to get them back. So if I have someone that'll commit to one way, I need a second body.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I just.
So we, I, I would entertain that if I had people that were like on both sides to make that work. We just haven't had anybody that's, that's fit the stipulation.
But if there was somebody that was willing to do one way, I would say, let's get them in as a sub, like, let's, let's, anybody's willing to do anything, let's get them in and start talking.
We currently, I mean, we currently have two routes on there that only run one way. So like Larry, for instance, runs an Elma CTE run in the morning, and that's it, that's all he wants. He doesn't want to work long days, he's, you know.
Well, and that's just it. I, it seems like there's a lot of retired or semi-retired people who might want to run in the morning, but don't want to run in the afternoon or vice versa.
Yeah, so we have one for each of those for the Elma runs, and then we kind of loop that driver in the running in the afternoon, running a whole flight home. But, yeah, so no one's ever reached out with that being the stipulation, so. If that is the case, then yeah, we definitely have a case.
Yeah, if you know someone, send them our way, talk to them about it. Well, we, Linda and I always talk about, like, there's got to be local farmers that this would be a great opportunity for, but maybe not, so. All right, thank you, Josh. Next, we're going to move into our Mount Pleasant High School update. We have John Linkler and Kristen Willey here from Mount Pleasant High School. Thanks, guys, for being here.
First, we want to thank the board again for having us here. It's a pleasure to always be able to highlight the wonderful things that we're doing at the high school. We're feeling very good about this year. We have a lot of things still to work on, but tonight's is going to be just a lot of highlights of some of the things we've done, some of the new programs we've put in. And, you know, we hope to in the future meetings have some of our students come in and maybe present some of our clubs and some of the other things so that, like I said, I know you enjoy seeing our kids much more than you enjoy seeing us.
And there are videos throughout the whole presentation, and feel free, if you want to watch them on your own. I do want to give Pat and his staff a shout-out for the oil spill. If you had any chance to watch our Veterans Day piece, it was absolutely amazing. I told him, I cried before I got to school, and then again when I watched it in front of veterans. And we did want to thank our board members who were able to join us for our breakfast. It was awesome. It was a really special event. And if you go to our Mount Pleasant High School YouTube page, you, you can subscribe and watch all of the videos that Pat and his crew makes. They do an excellent job. On the next slide, we have some, sorry. There you go. That's okay. On the next slide, there are fourteen flicks, but as Jen flicks away, there's some photos from our Veterans Day piece. We had our GI Tech Club that made the centerpieces, our SFE food service. We catered to about a hundred people that day. We had our student senate members mixed in with our community members. And one of the students who attended came back and they said, wow, this is really cool. We were able to ask questions to veterans. We had a couple kids stay after because they were interested in military careers. And I think we all went home with our hearts full and our buckets full after that event, so it was very cool. Badger is just finished up and wrapped up on the twentieth. It was a World War II piece that Mr. Clack and his students put together. And soon, they just, actually, the pamphlets are on our principal's office table. They're going to do Mamma Mia in the spring, so we look forward to that as well. And I think it was Mr. Clack's birthday, and he made some twenty-foot set. I mean, extraordinary man and very talented. So there's a little clip from our students. And the next piece, sorry about that, I may have just hit not play there. Our, our band, they placed tenth place at state finals. This is one of the pieces where I got to stand down on the field with our band. Their theme was Angels and Demons, and they did an excellent job. Our pipeline is going to perform at our basketball games, and they'll have a small group in attendance there. I know we get to hear all of that, brings us back to football season here. We have our October Students of the Month. We have Logan and Erica in our cross-country and golf. We're trying to continue to highlight both athletes and students around our school. So this is a piece that goes on our social media pages. Our Rotary Citizens of the Month, John just attended. How did that go today? They did both Quentin and Aubrey. They were nominated for Rotary Citizens of the Month, and I think Aubrey is actually going to attend next week too, because she had an exam or something they didn't take today. But we're very excited to honor our Rotary Citizens of the Month. We also had some staff members who were honored, Jason McIntyre, Coach of the Year, and Julie Exon, which was also Coach of the Year for volleyball and for football. So great things to celebrate. Our swim team, they actually moved up one place from last year and almost two places. They were very, very close. Kelly Zhang, she got SPL Honor Gold Mention. So we're very excited for our swim team. Along with that, we have our MI Career Request Field Trip at the end of October. This was an awesome event. I was really excited to see all the pictures and all the hands-on activities. We bussed every tenth grader to Saginaw Valley University at the, and drawing like at the Ryder Center. And they got to explore about anything you could think of. Careers, they were doing CPR, they were doing gold work, they touched the lung over here to the left-hand side. They had so much fun. They were exhausted at the end of the day, and that's what I call a good field trip. Signing day we had in the cafeteria, gosh, a week and a half ago at seams. So we had Max, Aubrey, healing, and Izzy Struel, and that was a great event where they got to celebrate in front of their family and friends in our cafeteria for signing day. One of the things that we're working on with our school improvement team and our counseling team is to start our trails program a little bit more often throughout the year. It's a, there's some targeted lessons that Amanda Boyle is, is kind of leading, she's a trainer. So this one in October was suicide awareness and prevention for caregivers in communities. And students or family members could use a QR code and sign up for that. And then she's also going to work with some small groups throughout the year. So I'm really excited to learn from her with this trails program. Our school improvement team also created some tips for finals. Each student got a bag of goodies and test-taking tips, and they also got some digits to help them for finals. This was just a photo of our regional PD day with Jim Harris. We were all over at the Saginaw Triple X Nantrave, so, sorry, Resort, the big resort center. And we got to hear Jim Harris in some of the pieces. We were able to come back immediately and kind of talk with our staff, debrief, and learn more about how we could continue to do better. One thing that we worked on at the end of October with our freshman success class is Eric Solmick, and we also had Tanya Jackson and the Onion Creek Drummers, and they came and they performed and they educated our freshmen, and I thought this was one of my favorite speaking events or presentations for our freshman success group. And so it was very memorable, and I think our kids really enjoyed it. I did put that one, see it? I did some of them and not all of them. Our clubs, one thing we wanted to talk about and promote more is all of the different ways that we could get involved at Mount Pleasant High School. And I think coming from the middle school, we just have so many things that the kids could be involved in, and I feel like there's a group for everything. And so we will be working with the middle schoolers soon by signing up for classes, but just to broadcast the different clubs and activities they could belong in, I think is important that we will continue to communicate. One thing that we just finished up today, I worked with our freshman, our Nicole Cook, is we are doing an eighth-grade parent and guardian informational piece in the cap, or, sorry, in the auditorium on the fourth of January. And we will talk to our incoming freshman class, our eighth-grade parents, and talk to them about scheduling and how the high school's a little bit different than the middle school and what to look out for. And our penny wars, which I think we talked about in October, we raised one thousand thirty-five dollars, which I thought was a pretty good event for some change, and that goes to our Miles for Miracles fundraiser. And then last but not least, I'm going to give one more shout-out to Pat and his group. But we, we started our PRID acronym, our PBIS matrix, and we had, I actually narrated one version of the slides to send out to staff, but Pat and his students actually narrated this piece, and it went out for CulturePunk. So all of the second hours got to see students talk through all of the slides. What does it mean to be prepared? What does it mean to be responsible? And so I thought that, that was awesome, and we're going to continue to roll with that throughout the year. Thank you, thanks, Sarah.
Any questions or, and if you, if you look through those clubs, if there's any that you'd like to hear from, we'd love to invite them, so.
Actually, can you talk to us just a little bit about how clubs are structured? And so who's in charge? Is it the teacher that supervises, and if so, how does that work? If it's not, like, just, just, is it after school? Does it compete with athletics? If you're an athlete, can you still do that? Is that a few I'm thinking of?
Yes, yes, and yes. Yes, so the, the general procedure is, whether it's a staff or a student, they come up with an idea of a club that they want, and that's true. And then the next thing is, is we look for, do you have interest, or is this a solo thing? And then the next part is, they have to, if it hasn't already been initiated by a staff member, they have to recruit a staff member to run the club and so on. And then, you know, we look later if there's something for how it's financed and stuff like that. Most times, like I said, they're just something that they can, that kids either have or whatever. I mean, I know we've done a few things with, like, board game club and stuff like that, but. So generally that, when they meet, it's entirely up to them. So most of them have, look at what the other kids' schedules are and try not to have it interfere with drama or music or athletics or something like that, so.
That helps. And so just to clarify, so let's say I'm a tenth grader and I want to have a chess club. Then I find a staff. Then I find a staff that's willing to meet, or that staff that's volunteering their time? And then, so let's say they need once a week, that's on their, that's personal time.
It is.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Other questions for John Anderson?
Thank you both very much. The last item under that report is just to point out to you that in your board packet this evening, you do have information regarding the organizational meeting. There is a draft of meeting dates. Tim and Amy and I met last week and worked through some of those dates. There's also a schedule for reports. So you can see what reports are pre-planned for the year. And if, then at the bottom of that, there are some ideas for maybe other reports we might try to add in. So that's something that we're hoping to get more feedback from you. I know that, like John mentioned, you know, that you'd like to hear from more student groups. But if there's other departments or groups we'd like to hear from. So just to review that. And then the last thing that we'll add in that's not there yet is the description of appointments. I wanted to make sure, I need to go back through and finalize all the people that are currently in those roles so you can see that. But just remember, the organizational meeting will do a series of appointments. And so we want to make sure that you all have that information to look at ahead of time. So, because after tonight, we only have one more meeting until our organizational meeting.
Are you looking for feedback tonight for reports or whatnot?
If you have it, I would gladly take it, yeah.
I like it all.
All their reports.
Well, I mean, I think the more we hear, the better, right? And sometimes it's the only way for the public to hear about some of the things that we may know, but it's not publicly available. And so unless there's, you know, I don't want our meetings to be so boring that they take three hours. So maybe we find five, but if, if we can, have as many as possible.
I like, you just implemented, it was a report from different ideas. And there's no reason that that can, most of those can be made public. So that the, you know, a lot of the smaller, less intense ones could be out there for public feedback. And I think that's a, I thought that was a phenomenal thing.
So in talking with our administrators, I do think it'll be similar information that they're sharing that is similar to what they're putting in a newsletter, but perhaps a little bit different or a little bit more in-depth. The groups that I probably won't have do those reports will be the high school and the middle school because we will continue with them coming here every month.
Does that make sense?
Although I told them they could have December off, so I hope that's okay.
The other thing that we worked on is balanced loading. And so trying to spread the reports out for the meetings and other things that we have to do that aren't necessarily on here. But we know that we have to do is to try and help manage that a little bit and finding where there are gaps. So we don't necessarily have to have two board meetings on every single month. Trying to align that and balance load it so we can be more efficient with our time and that structure.
Any other feedback on those pieces?
We will get the description piece done and I'll email it to you based on there is a bit of a gap before our next meeting seat and look at that.
And so we want board members to make sure you look at it because we appoint board members to some of those seats. And so if there's things that you're interested in, have an idea, so it's not a cold call on January 3rd? January 9th, when we have our organizational meeting. Or if you have any questions, please reach out and get clarification on some of those things. Is there any questions for the superintendent under the superintendent's report items? Next item on the report is requested financial reports, Ginger.
Good evening. Good afternoon. Tonight, the requested financial reports for the general fund and our special service funds for the month ending October 2022 compared to 2023. For general fund, revenue was at 10% of budget this year compared to 11% last year. And our expenditures are at 20% of budget this year compared to 21% last year. So we're right on target there with our general fund. For our special service funds, athletics, revenue was at 49% of budget this year compared to 300% last year. Expenditures are at 23% of budget this year compared to zero last year. There is an addition this year in the Sustaining Sports Program of the middle school football program. So we'll see some different numbers skewed than last year. I know you've heard me every single month saying last year's numbers were skewed because of the addition of the dance to the, these Sustaining Sports Program. The Children Learning Center, revenue is at 17% of budget this year compared to 42% last year. Expenditures are at 20% of budget compared to 31% last year. For our nurse testing program, there will not be any revenue anymore in this program. Expenditures are at 2% of budget this year compared to 0% last year. This is again the fund balances that we're just spending now until it's gone and this will go away. Food service, revenue is at 4% of budget this year compared to 6% last year. Expenditures are at 24% of budget compared to 16% last year. Food service is a little bit wonky this year, technical term. We are a little bit behind in our revenue claims because they weren't available. The state system has been a little bit messed up. The claim was submitted late, the state couldn't approve it in time. Like there's, there's just been a whole bunch of back and forth. But they're open now. We have to get special approval to get our reimbursement for our obvious meal claims. September's ready to go and October will be as soon as it's all wrapped up this month, which should be any day now. So the revenue is a little bit behind, but we will be having more. And we hope to see expenditures higher this year than they were last year because we are in a situation, if you remember from our audit report, that we have excess fund balances in our food service account. So we will be spending more this year than we did last year. So we don't have that violation of excess fund balances in the food service account. And the school store, revenue is at 48% of budget this year compared to 36% last year. And expenditures are at 35% of budget compared to 22% last year.
Just one question, and I don't know why I've never asked this. If we don't have a senior program, what are we spending the money on?
She's spending it on nurse testing, the program that we still have within the GI Tech. I don't know the correct term of that actual class, but the nursing programs that we're still teaching our students. We just aren't doing the actual testing here in our building anymore that we would get revenue for. So that's where all of the fund balances came from. But we still have nursing classes in the tech center and we're spending the money on needs for that program.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. For our treasures report, on September 30th, for general fund, we had a cash balance of $8.7 million. We have receipts in the month of October of $3 million and dispersments of $5 million. That brings us to the outside on October 31st of $6.6 million. For the debt retirement fund, on September 30th, we had a cash balance of $374,000. We have a small amount of income of $56, almost $57, and dispersments in the month of October of $142,000. That brings us to the outside on October 31st of $231,000. And for the capital projects fund, on September 30th, we had $24.3 million. We had receipts in the month of October of $60,000, dispersments of $330,000. That brings us to the outside on October 31st of $24.1 million. Any questions?
Our next budget amendment.
It's being worked on currently. There's a lot of work involved in the salary and benefit piece, the, all the ins and outs and different things that are being negotiated and, you know, increasing retirement and health insurance and all that stuff. So it's, it's coming together. We're hoping to bring it to you. Hopefully December, maybe January. Last year, I know it was approved in January. So I'll see where all those moving parts are. I would guess it'd probably be closer to the first meeting in January. Because there's more, there's a lot of things that you need to discuss, you need to discuss as a board and different pieces involved in that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ginger from the finance area? The next item under our agenda is correspondence. The board did not receive any correspondence in this last period of time. Next on the agenda is the citizens' request to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda item. Again, we give you minutes to be able to do that. Tonight, I'm going to be a timekeeper also. And Laura Gorley, you are the first one.
Okay, hello. I'm going to just quickly pass something out to everyone. My name is Laura Gorley and live and work in Mount Pleasant. As we continue into our fifth year of our district partnering with Saginaw Childbirth, Childbirth Nation, and Shepherd Public Schools under the SAMSA-funded Project Aware grant, I want to give a shout out that this effort has had a really profound impact on me as a professional. I had already worked in the district for 31 years as a school counselor when the Project Aware grant came into my life. And at the very first training that was provided by STAR, formerly known as Star Commonwealth, we were introduced to the circle of courage as a model of resilience, which immediately, on that day, I remember, it resonated with me. I loved that it blended the image and the wisdom of the medicine field, which I had been familiar with because I've been working in this town for so long, along with the four basic human needs of belonging, independence, generosity, and mastery. I use this in my daily conversations with children. And I confess that as I lived through the pandemic, working from home, learning technology that I'd never had to learn before, I used the circle of courage for my own resiliency to get through that time. All of the trauma training that has been provided by STAR has been significantly helpful to me as I navigate my way through every day at work. The amount of trauma that our students bring into the building each day is palpable. At recent professional development that Jim Harris, Dr. Jim Harris provided, he reminded us that teachers and other school staff in the modern moment are dealing with the four A's. Oh, I thought, what are those? He reminds us that we have more than ever anxiety, ADHD, autism, and adverse childhood experiences in our classroom. Oh, I immediately resonated with how true that is. Now that you mention it, the four A's, they're making our jobs very difficult and more important than ever. I'm so grateful for Project Aware and I'm grateful that it's provided our district over these last years with such important and impactful training and that that has invited us to examine the role that trauma plays in our work, not only the current traumas, but the historical traumas that this country bears the weight of. I cannot imagine doing my job right now had I not had the support of Project Aware. And this statement is a love letter to all those people that had the vision to write this grant and the person power to coordinate it all and bring it to us. It's a major undertaking and I'm just very grateful for it. So please accept my love letter for Project Aware.
Thank you. The next is Roman Frost.
Hi, I'm a student here at the high school. And there's been the introduction, but it hasn't really been adapted yet in this idea of Derek Dollars, where it's a reward-based behavioral system. And one of the big things about this is with studies show that it doesn't really apply to kids our age. And although the idea behind this, it's going to, I don't necessarily think the execution of it will be shown up. And one of the big things is it follows more of the theme of this more middle school type policy being applied to high school and how that doesn't necessarily work out with us. One of the biggest things with the Derek Dollars is at least every class I've been in, there's one person that's like, let's print them off, let's flood the system, stuff like that. So one of the biggest things is, it's a little bit, we're too old in the group to do things that we could create fraud with. But like places where middle school, where like kids aren't necessarily that vicious yet, I think that it does work well. So, and then one thing is, is some teachers are going to get more than others. I find that in more honors AP courses, teachers are less motivated to give out more of those rewards. So it, you know, like you're taking cover classes, but you're not getting the fun goal prizes. So, and a lot of the teachers that it does work for, most of them have their own sort of reward system, where like they give out pieces of candy and stuff like that. So, although I do think like the oil jobs in middle school, those were great, those were fun. They had me excited, but Derek Dollars just feel like another thing to think about. So, and then within that, like the culture camp stuff, I feel like that's fun and it gives us a nice break from class. But sometimes it feels a bit repetitive where it's the same stuff we've been hearing since elementary school. So it's fun, it's a nice break, but when it takes up a lot of time. Another thing in that is the oil spill. I really actually enjoy that and I think that, you know, thinking Pat and just having more segments on that, like bring better stuff to the school. The finals kids, the fidgets, those were great. Like another part of the high school versus middle schools, if those were in middle school, it would be craziness. Everybody would be obsessed with the fidgets, they'd be bragging about it, they'd be thrown everywhere. But here in high school, people just appreciate them, you know? If somebody wants a prettier color, they just trade with no issues. So I think that was great, you know, I agree with the card, but I love the fidgets. And I'm excited that fifth grade camp is happening again. I still remember that when I did it. I, my group, we hold some records there, so I'm glad that people won't have the chance to break those. Overall, I think we're doing some great stuff and learning more about the transportation and the maintenance. I feel like it's broadened my understanding of school. And I feel like having some more reports from students where they're in clubs or activities or sports, I think that that would benefit the school board to learn more, but would also encourage more students to be here. Because if you have a friend that has to give a presentation, they're like, I don't want to go alone, please come with me. You'll have more people coming and more people will come. And then more people are going to learn about this school and they're going to be educated on the things that they're complaining about and celebrating. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that is all under the citizens' request to address the board. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, there is the approval of the November 7, 2022 minutes and the approval of the financial records and the amount of, our financial bills in the amount of $1,806,57.05. Is there a motion to approve these two items under the consent agenda?
So moved. Seconded.
Are there any further questions? All those in favor, please answer by standing aye.
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 Any opposed? Approval of those minutes. Next item on the agenda is new business.
The first item under new business is approval of the fifth grade camp. But either the presentation from earlier this evening, you do have all of the appropriate paperwork for fill trips in your, in your work packet this evening.
Is there a motion to approve the fifth grade field trip?
So moved.
Seconded.
Is there any further questions? All those in favor, please answer by standing aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion approved. Fifth graders have a good time.
Maybe we can ask what they should.
Ooh, there you are. The next item on the agenda is a resignation.
Yes, good evening. We would like the board to accept the resignation of Linda Close. Linda Close came out of retirement to help us this year as a special education math teacher, but she is pursuing another adventure in the business world. And so we're accepting her resignation.
Is there a motion to accept the resignation, Ms. Close?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any further questions for Linda? With much respect, stepping up and coming out of her retirement back to the school district. All those in favor of the resignation of Ms. Close, please answer by standing aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is actually the board is going to be going into closed session. We're going to go into closed session for negotiation discussions with the Mount Pleasant Teachers Association. All the associations actually, what is going to run some of them off. And actually the superintendent valuation. Both items under the Meetings Act allow us to go into closed session upon request and these have been requested. So is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved. Seconded.
Any questions? We will go.
Did you sign it?
Yes.
Jesse, did you join in?
Yes.
Sheila, did you?
Yes.
Tim, did you?
Yes.
We can go here.
And as unanimous, we're going into closed session. Thank you everyone for attending. You may wait until after everything's over. You may wait until after everything's over. We will go back into open session. This might be a little bit of a while, but you are more than welcome to wait.